At six thirty-one, reminder to everyone here, meeting is being digitally recorded, so please again, as always, be respectful for each other, whether you're speaking or listening to someone. Is anyone here for open session?
I am.
All right, before you get started, one of the reasons that I didn't put you on the agenda, but doing it this way, is I felt that the meeting, a couple of meetings ago, when we had Senator Durant and State Representative Bertram, one of the major discussion points was Comet Pond. It took up most of the time, I felt, excuse me, I felt then that they had been explained pretty well, so I want, that's why it's not on the agenda, but to have you here in open session at least allows you to get on the record with whatever it is you want to present to us tonight. I would ask you, if you can, to limit it between three and five minutes, because the major work tonight for us is to go over the budget. Is that okay with you?
Yes, I've been given three minutes, and I think I have under three minutes.
Okay, then the floor is yours.
All right, my name is Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond Road, Hubbardston. I'm disappointed that the change to Comet Pond by DCR on open water swimming was not worthy of being an agenda item that I requested for tonight's meeting. I have been given only three minutes, so I'll be brief. I'd like you to enter into the minutes of tonight's meeting, the email, and the questions that I previously sent to the select board. They provided copies to all board members. Here are my questions this evening. Here are my questions this evening. Does the select board have any concerns about DCR's decision to allow open water swimming at Comet Pond? Number two, does the select board have any concerns regarding safety of swimmers, parking concerns, or water quality issues? Number three, does the select board wish to be proactive and work with DCR to get the best possible plan of implementation? Number four, will the town of Hubbardston have any responsibility for a drowning swimmer or a Route sixty-eight parking accident due to parking on the shoulder and having traffic going by at fifty miles per hour? Five, does the select board wish to have any input regarding our town's most precious national resource? My time is up, so I'll rush my case and leave it to the select board and legal council to decide the next steps to responsibly, to be responsible to the drastic changes coming to Comet Pond. Thank you for my three minutes.
Thank you, Ed. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this before we?
Do I have to read the changes again?
All right, I appreciate, again, and it'll be on the record, and we will be revisiting this probably. Right now, one of the question marks I had, which affects some of the questions you were asking, one of the things I felt, and still do feel, that enforcement, to me, is practically going to be impossible, just because of the fact that you have state and local involved. Even, now let's say even if you were to try the enforcement, the cost factor is a big question mark to me in terms of what the cost could mean to the town of Hubbardston, just in terms of trying to enforce, because it would involve our law enforcement people, et cetera. The state is supposedly providing, which they haven't been doing the last couple of years, lifeguards, so there's a lot of things still to be dealing with before I can come on the side of this, because I'm just a little leery about it, and the fate, the position we find the town in right now financially, in my opinion, this isn't the time for us to venture on a possible, could be, major expense for the town. So that's where we're at, but we, this isn't going to go away, so I'm just letting you know that you've been heard, and we will be probably discussing this again.
Okay, well, I hope the, I hope the select board will be proactive in this and not just wait to see how it, how it comes out. I think there's enough issues, which I've given you in detail, that if some of those could be addressed by the board, we're trying to protect the best natural resource that Hubbardston has, and it's more of a concern for safety for me than it is being a resident on Comet Pond. But thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you too, Ed.
Well, Ed, before you go, I mean, I think you brought up a lot of points there, and some, some of, some of the things you brought up are factual questions, right, that we'll have to find the answers to, and some of them are opinions, board's opinions. So I think our takeaway now is to get the answers to the factual questions, we can see where that lands us, and then we can talk about our opinions and make a decision going forward of how the board feels. So, I mean, we got, we got a lot of facts there that we're going to have to dive into and check, and check, you know, liability and whatnot, and see where that lands us, and then go to, then go to a discussion based off of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Blanchard, I do thank you for sending in your opinion on this matter this evening. However, I do want you to note that the Hubbardston Select Board, one, will always care for safety across the board, and, two, has taken a public stance on the changes proposed almost a year ago at this time. And at that time, we were talking about open swimming, and the select board supported a letter that I had proposed in opposition to, don't quote me on this, but the open swimming, being able to ride twenty-four horses without a permit, and a couple other issues. So I, the, one of the reasons that, in my own thoughts, bringing it up and speaking with the chair about what was appropriate to be on the meeting, was that, the fact that it had come up in front of both Angobi and the two state legislators, and the fact that there are more unanswered questions than a opportunity for the select board to give an opinion on something. Like, this is one hundred percent, I hope with the chair's blessing being taken under advisement, but please give us the opportunity to do our own due diligence and looking to this without opinions one way or the other. And that is with the most respect, because I do tremendously respect you and this community and what you brought to the table this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nate. You were going to send me a copy of that letter. I'd still like to see a copy of that letter. I just feel that, you know, DCR is going to be making all the rules and regulations regarding this in the next month or so. The next watershed advisory meeting is on April eleventh, and they may have more regulations at that meeting. But if Hubbardston's going to have any say as to concerns that the town would have, you best get to John Scannell at DCR sooner than later. And if this will be, be another item that will make your agenda at the next meeting, please advise.
I can't speak to that with one hundred percent certainty, but let me dig up what's going on and get some additional facts from DCR, and get back to the select board and you.
Sounds great. Have a great spring. I know it came out early, so that's good for Hubbardston.
It's supposed to snow for a day.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Just had a point of information. You mentioned something about twenty-four horses? What is this?
Oh, not a comment.
Okay, not, not horsepower, right?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, move to announcements.
All right. So, this coming up Wednesday, March twentieth, at ten a.m., the library is having a fundraiser. It goes along with their Storytime. They will have bunnies up there, that families can come up and have photos that they can take with the bunnies, with their littles. It's fifteen dollars per fam, sorry, I have allergies, so, kind of like gag or something, Jesus. Fifteen dollars per family, and again, that's for the Storytime, ten a.m. on March twentieth, for the library. On March twenty-third, which is this Saturday coming up, the Easter egg hunt will be held at ten a.m., rain or shine at Rec Field. It's put on by Parks Department with the help of Girl Scouts. Bring your own basket or bag or something like that to collect the eggs. They're going to have three different fields, pre-K, and then they'll have the kindergarten through second grade, and then third and above. And again, that's this Saturday, ten a.m., rain or shine. On April twentieth, eight a.m. till noon, there's going to be Keep Hubbardston Beautiful. That's up at the Rec Field. The Girl Scouts will have a bottle and can fundraiser. The Boy Scouts will have the scrap metal recycling bin. They're asking for a dollar per item donation or ten dollar per truckload. They'll also be taking car batteries for ten box. They do have a flyer floating around on the internet, and I believe I put, yes, I put it on under special events, Keep Hubbardston Beautiful, the stuff, it says what they do not accept, you know, like tires and things like that. We will have a dumpster up there for trash pickup to pick up along the sides of roads. And again, that is April twentieth, eight to noon, Keep Hubbardston Beautiful. And that is rain or shine. There are scholarships available for anyone that is either graduating, and then there's one that also, if there's people going back to school. So the Country Hen has a scholarship going on through April twenty-second is the deadline, and that one you can find on the town website. The Hubbardston Scholarship Committee has three scholarships available, and that one you can find through their Facebook page. That one, their due date is April fifteenth. That's the first one on the list. They also allow people to apply that are going back to school, so like, you know, you stay-at-home mom and you want to go back, or, you know, grandpa wants to go finish off that, whatever, you can, you can apply. The Lions have one as well. Theirs is the latest on the list. Theirs is not due till May fifth, and you can find theirs on Facebook as well. And then coming up, there is also the Hubbardston Fair in June from nine to two at the Rec Field with the rain date of the ninth.
Did you mention a Country Hen?
Yes, that was the first one I mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. That was the first one I mentioned.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, board or public here, have any announcements or reports to give to us at a particular point in time? All right, seeing that.
I have a question. Are all those scholarships on the electronic side?
Not yet. The Lions one isn't yet, because I'm waiting for the Easter egg thing to fall off, and there was something else I was supposed to put on at the same time. So I've been, I've been busy this week, so that's going to be scheduled to be put on as of, as soon as the Easter egg thing falls off. The bunny thing, the fundraiser for the library.
And when does that fall off?
Wednesday. The, that one I was talking about, the twentieth, the library fundraiser, that falls off on the twentieth, so.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, before moving to the main job for tonight, is Susan coming? Do we know? Oh, she isn't. Okay. All right, then, as we move to the town administrator's proposed budget presentation, I'll invite the members of the finance committee that are here to come join us.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully ask the Monroe's if taking Chris out of order helps them in any way.
Oh.
No, no, we took one card today.
Oh, okay.
So he's trapped here anyway.
Oh, no, that.
He could always write back with Chuck.
Does that help you, Chris, if we?
No, not really. I'm stuck here.
Okay, I'm sorry, but, sure. Then come join us if you will.
There's a stack of paper over there. Your stack of paper.
There's no need to call anything in order, there are only two members. Okay.
Yeah, so that one. Yep, there you go.
The whole little, each way.
Oh, they're good. No, you have them all now. You have them all now. I'm watching, don't worry.
Do we have enough to give, if they wanted?
There's a couple more stacks right there.
One short.
Transfer, would you like a copy or going over?
If you have an extra one, I would appreciate it.
Chris, you want one?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, we'll be going to that later anyway. Thank you very much.
All right. Members of the select board, members of the finance committee, those in the audience here this evening, I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening on the town administrator's proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. I am not here to speak a hundred and nineteen pages of luckety, guckety-guck into the minutes, so I have kept this very short. Tonight is going to be a high-level discussion to basically get the conversation going, and then over the next few months, as we work our way towards town meeting, there will be questions that create change, and once the variables that currently exist come to become less variables, we will be able to change the budget to create the version that will end up being voted on by the select board, the finance committee, and eventually town meeting. With that, the budget presented this evening, and that was placed on the website and in your email inbox, is as up-to-date as it could possibly be at this time. Are there things that could change? Absolutely. I would like to thank the town employees, the department heads, the board and committee chairs, the finance committee, the select board for working with me over the past several months to put this together. Without the team effort, it wouldn't work as well as it has been. It's not letting me change my presentation. One second.
You hate people on here.
No, I mean us. More than one computer on in the room, so nothing will work.
Mine was being super difficult this morning, like nothing wanted to happen.
Mine just shut its cell phone on.
I dropped mine on the floor and it still works great.
That's a plus. He dropped his on the floor and it still works great.
Sorry about that technical difficulty. All right, thank you to everybody that I had just mentioned, and the select board, finance committee, and my finance and administration team for working with me over the last few months on the proposal being presented here this evening. As noted, I am going to aim to do a relatively high-level review of the budget at this time. Questions can be presented both today and over time. There will be public sessions, select board sessions, and finance committee sessions ahead of deliberation and voting on these matters, as you likely know. One of the important parts of the budget book that I felt was important to present here this evening was the Hubbardston organizational chart. It points to the facts and the way the forefathers of this community wanted the community or the municipal organization to operate, and I think it's very relevant today, as it has been for the entire history of the town, with everyone in the municipal operation falling under the Hubbardston residents or voters. So I think that is important to remember as we write our budget, and it is important to remember that that's who we all, in various capacities, work for and answer to. Some more than others. I've also included a tax flow chart with a few changes at the suggestion of Heather from last year, because I think I was a little too broad with how taxes get here. So I took into consideration and changed it to money residents pay through real estate and excise taxes gets brought through the town process. Speaking on this this evening would be really preaching to the choir, but please go take a look at that. I put some time into that. Budget overview. The total proposed budget is eleven million ninety-six thousand forty dollars, a four-point-nine percent increase from FY twenty-four. The revenue growth is four-point-three percent to ten million nine-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand forty dollars. The tax levy increased four-point-two percent to eight, eight million seven-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand five-hundred-and-forty-one, which is eighty percent of general fund revenues. Those numbers are going to continue being shocking throughout this whole presentation this evening, because the tax levy revenue in this town is very high. It is both a good thing for community and the type of rural area the town likes, but it is also a difficult hurdle to get over when it comes to paying taxes and the amount of taxes that homeowners and taxpayers pay into the municipal operation year after year. State aid increased four percent in this proposal. It is yet to be seen if that will actually be the number. I'm waiting for a updated number from the governor's office. I am anticipating that next month after the House begins their budget negotiations. As we likely know, there will be a few different phases in which we will get updates from the state. We got a state, an update when the governor wrote her budget and submitted it to the legislature. We will get an update when the House of Representatives writes their budget and does their budget week, amends the governor's budget, and releases it. We will get an update when the state senate does their budget week and releases it. We will get an update after the conference committee, where they take the two budgets and debate the differences between them. We'll get an update after that. And then we will get one final update as the governor signs and implements the budget, which will likely be in late May or early June.
Happened to that right now, I was thinking like December.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
I've put local receipts up five-point-four percent to one-point-five million dollars. Our expenditure drivers are all fixed costs, and the main fixed cost driver of the budget expenditure increase this year is education. I would like to reiterate at the very, very beginning of this conversation that Hubbardston on all levels is pro-education. We want to support the students, but there's going to be a number of difficult conversations, because supporting the schools at the level in which we are wanted to and required to is going to have some really adverse impact on the other operations in the town. All municipal departments have either decreased or level serviced their budget this year. Revenue, we just went over the revenue, but here is a bigger picture of it. The FY twenty-five tax levy is estimated to provide eight million seven-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. That is a large percent. It is ninety-five-point-nine percent of the, of revenue, and you have a prop two and a half for...
It's so small I can't even read it.
It's so small I can't even read it.
That's two-point.
Yeah, two-point-four percent, and new growth for one-point-three, or a hundred thousand dollars. And debt exclusion, which I may be, have to take out of there after a conversation with both Heather and the town accountant. So it's forty thousand dollars, won't have that much of an impact on the revenue, but it, to clean it up, would probably shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no problem. State aid.
It's better to catch it now than it is later.
I'm trying to stop the taxes.
Key department changes. Yeah, versus waiting until the end, if anyone has any questions, feel free to either raise your hand or interrupt me. General Government IT maintenance budget increased by eight thousand dollars, ten-point-three percent, to eighty-four thousand dollars for the whole department. What that is, that's the Kia Siro money that has not been in the budget for the last two years. I'm working with them right now in an attempt to get it lower by lowering the number of users, and we're working on that. I'm hoping to be able to free up some money there over the next year to potentially do other projects. The town clerk salary increased twelve thousand five hundred dollars to sixty thousand dollars. I kept it that way, because that was the setup we had for the now former town clerk. As we interview town clerk candidates right now, a number of them are not interested in being both the assessor's clerk and the town clerk, so we're going to have to weigh our options. I will likely come forward with a proposal or a person in the coming weeks.
So the sixty thousand was with the notion that they were also the assessor's clerk?
Yes. Yeah, there's a two percent increase in the actual town clerk role over a year ago. The entirety of that increase is moving over from the assessor's department, so it is a, it's net neutral.
So where this position has been, high turnover, and you've recently done some studies looking at the various pay that different positions make in the area comparable towns. Was there any information that came to light with regards to the town clerk position?
So the sixty thousand dollars is fair and equitable pay for the town clerk. Like, that's what is going on. The reason we did not get any qualified town clerks, we have plenty of qualified people in the applicant pool, but they have different qualifications and different experiences. The reason we did not get a qualification more in line with that of a town clerk is likely the pay. Because sixty thousand dollars would be fine for a town this, this size if it was solely thirty to forty hours of town clerk work. Once you add in a whole second department, it skews the numbers a little bit.
So how much are we paying on average every time we have to train a new town clerk? We often have a prior town clerk come and kind of be the tutor. What is the cost that that is adding each time we do that?
Fifty an hour.
Yeah. This year, you, we kept the spending on purpose at right around seven thousand dollars, twelve hours per week. I hope to not need seven thousand dollars. I'm hoping that.
But we're not, excuse me, but we're not paying a town clerk at the time, so it's the difference between clerk's pay and the other one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But sometimes we've paid both.
Yep.
Yeah, last year.
On some of the.
And the fact that we're not paying a town clerk this week or last week, I would hope would be used to offset the one or two weeks that I would hope to keep the interim to show the new town clerk, kind of the ropes, and be there as a safety net for them for a little while.
So my last question, so, or last set of questions, over the last two years, how many town clerks have we had?
Oh, gosh.
Four? Three, four? Not including?
Four.
Okay. So we've had four town clerks, and let's say hypothetically, even if they were good qualified individuals, we may have had to train them and pay for the training at the same time. And if you average, you know, seven thousand... And if you average, you know, seven thousand dollars, you've been rounded down to six. Six thousand dollars for each training, two trainings a year is twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand with the current pay we have there puts us at sixty thousand dollars. Or alternatively, we could pay a town clerk sixty thousand dollars and not have an additional twelve thousand dollar expense every year.
I agree with you. I got it, yeah.
So it, but it just seems like, you know, with such a valuable position and one that, you know, literally puts everyone up the creek every time there's turnover. That, and I know money is extremely tight. We're talking about, you know, I already upset the bandwagon forty K. You know, we could be upsetting it more with a hundred here, a hundred there and so forth. But I think that's something as a board we need to consider because at the end of the day, where they say penny wise, pound foolish, right? So we reduce the costs, pay the lowest amount going for a town clerk, hire the town clerk, have to pay an additional seven thousand dollars to train the town clerk, and then six months later, we get to do it all over again, never making progress.
Has any of the town clerks mentioned why they have been leaving?
Yes.
The pay?
Uh, the pay has been a part of almost all of them. One, it was more of a benefits pension balance deal. She, I can publicly say this because she has publicly said it, she had a lot of quarters in the private sector. So by the time she would have retired, it would have kind of messed with her retirement one way or another. The most recent one, there was a variety of reasons, mostly a a bigger and better opportunity. And it was, I was bummed to see the most recent one go because she was qualified in almost every way to be doing her job. But I am also, with that being said, very happy that she found a higher paying job that pays for more of her benefits.
Are we looking for any specific minimum experience or something?
Looking? Yes. Like, but, like, we are surely looking for a certain set of minimum experience. Are we getting town clerks and assistant town clerks? No, but there, this, we've interviewed last week and this week, and we do have a couple of very qualified people that if they take training seriously, will, in my opinion, be able to do the role.
And want to leave for a better paying job?
If I was a psychic, I'd be, so unfortunately, you cannot force somebody into that. All three of the candidates that were moving forward into a second round interview next week have expressed the, their interest in stability and their interest in really sinking their teeth into something. I like to hear that, but that's pretty much as far as I could make somebody commit.
Uh, one thing I can suggest is maybe change the way of training, maybe have them recorded so that when they come, you just have the recording and train them with the recording. Just a suggestion, I don't know how much it will help.
I think it's one of those positions, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time in this, it's just one of those positions from experience that you have to hands-on to do.
Hand on, yeah, you have to hand over it.
Watching a video, is it gonna teach you which box to check off in the, uh?
No, I was hoping with the experience, but yeah, maybe it's the transition that needs to happen, so I'm just trying to look.
So Nate, in the, in the future, when we do hire somebody and we do have to pay for their training and pay for them to get certified, can we get, can we offer them through our contract a minimum year's service, like three year service after they've completed their training?
So that's what we were talking about with the chief two weeks ago.
Okay.
Could we? Yes.
Yes.
But there's really no legal teeth to then turn around.
Right.
And hold their feet to the fire.
Right.
And we also wouldn't be able to, to go after them due to finances.
Right.
Okay.
So it, at this point, it's not even really worth doing the whole song and dance to then have it be a thinly veiled threat.
But hopefully, but with this increase in the salary, it it will become somewhat more of an incentive. Because I know you, I know you haven't been on the committee that, over the years, but consistently, the two that Nate mentioned, but specifically the salary has been a deterrent. Uh, one, the type of people yet, and secondly, they're in transition to go someplace else. And that has been consistent when, by their exit interviews.
So that sixty K is for both jobs, correct?
At this time.
We can't separate because.
We very much could.
What is the cost of that, 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 um, that helper for the?
Roughly ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, I thought it was twelve, ten.
Well, part of the problem was that it was separate. There just wasn't enough work for the assessor to keep anybody interested in taking the job, which is why we put them together.
Right.
So you're damned if you do and damned if you don't now, you know.
It's also, I'm gonna allude to, it's also tough when there is somebody that has intimate knowledge of who's good and who's not good, paying more than we do for, for that work.
Correct.
So there's.
There's always that.
Uh, they have been sending me, they being Regional Resource Group, the vendor that does our assessing, has been sending me a number of retired assessing clerks that we have been reaching out to. We had an interview earlier today, but she let me know right before the interview that she didn't think it was gonna be a good fit. I didn't necessarily know what that meant because she hadn't received any information or anything about pay, but saving me time. So.
Correct.
That's that, I'm hoping.
Far of a drive or something.
Yeah. I'm hoping that by the time I release the next updated budget, we have more clarity on what is going on with town clerk, assessor clerk. Cause there are, there is one candidate that would want it. Because unless the board did something, there would be an impact on the pay and on the hours of the proposed town clerk position if we split them. It that, it doesn't have to be that way, but after that, it takes another chunk of our very limited bottom line. And disperses it elsewhere. Public safety.
So, hold on, just to, just to wrap up this conversation and get some clarity, you've got three candidates?
Yep.
You're calling back for second interviews for the two positions at that price that you've got up there?
Yep, over thirty people applied, at varying experience levels.
Okay, and you're calling back three?
We interviewed.
Combination role for that's out?
Yep, we interviewed five.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And we're calling back two. Public safety, police department wages decreased in this proposal by thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars or seven point nine percent. This, this does not affect the actual number of bodies we have at this time. I would like to note that no decreases in this budget at this time have any impact on the number of people that we have in positions at this, in the community. It, we have two current vacancies in the police force, they have been vacant for some time. This would take from one of those that we are not filling. But the chief is still under the impression that at this point, he could still hire and deduct it from the overtime that we currently use and still be able to get to a fully staffed department at this level. Something you're going to hear me say time and time and time again over the, the next few weeks and months is that is not sustainable. Like, we are not going to be able to keep doing that and still have the opportunity to hire when a good candidate comes up. We also, something that is equally unstable, unsustainable, is the amount we pay for overtime. And not being able to fill the positions directly correlates to the amount of overtime we have to pay. And it's just a cyclical deal. We aren't paying enough to find, to find decent people, therefore, we're not hiring. And our guys have to work overtime and overtime is expensive. So that's that. Their public education budget increased due to the new contract that was approved several months ago. Fire department call wages decreased.
Public safety, right, you said public education.
Public education in the public safety department.
Okay, I got you.
All right, all right.
There is a provision, it was formerly known as the Quinnville, but now it is not. And they, one of their heavier negotiated points of their contract negotiation is what they get for having different levels of education. Fire department call wages decreased to seventy-two thousand dollars. The chief has noted that that is, that will work with the fire department. You'll notice within their budget, we combined fire and ambulance because it really didn't need to be two, two budgets as it just didn't. And neither the chief or I knew when that really started, but we combined the two. And the fire department is unique because they are fully staffed. So he cannot cut from his personnel line. So you'll notice there is a kind of general all over the place cuts from different departments to get to the three percent that I had asked them to do in the exercise. Again, I'd like to say none of this is with a smile on my face to propose this kind of stuff. We all know that, no one wants to have to propose any, any sort of cuts or limitations in service. But unfortunately, we can only do what we can do. Dispatch services increased sixteen point three percent or twenty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. That, what I would like people, what I would like to note is that that is almost a two-year increase because we did receive that money from E nine-one-one to offset the past year. So they did not jump that, that heavily, but it is a very serious jump. That is one of the main contributing factors to why I suggested and received approval to send that letter to them seeking a different way to get municipal involvement.
And that's all resident, um, driven, right? By the amount of people we're living in town?
Yep.
So we've had an increase in, it goes with kids at school too.
That is not as much resident driven as the school. The formula, I can get you the formula, I don't know it off the top of my head, but that's not exactly driven by how many people and is more driven by the fact that they had large contracts come to fruition and things went up. Again, all tying back to us needing a little bit of a better seat at the table as the second largest community.
They're still not transparent like they said they were gonna be three years ago.
Right.
So, need to hammer that home.
Yeah. All right. Public works, TPW wages level funded as they, we have not come to terms on a FY twenty-five through twenty-seven contract. I've been trying to reach out to the DPW union for about six months now and keep getting told that we are small, therefore, not a priority for the Teamsters guy. He is coming out on, and I would say that to his face, uh, cause I have an email.
Well, I'm just saying, it just, yeah.
And we, we are having a conversation on the second and fourth of April to hopefully get that.
Straightened out.
Straightened out. And behind us, I, there is obviously no ill will towards the three members of the DPW union over that. The way they are structured is not like the police and fire. They are required to bring their union representative with them. Whereas the two other unions can negotiate on their own as long as it is in a set standard that meets the needs of the union as a whole. So it's been unique.
Can that get fixed in this union coordination?
It's, it's, it's not a, it's not an us thing.
Oh, well, I mean on their side. Uh, anyway, whatever.
Is it provision in the union contract or is that?
It's provision of the union is what I was told.
Okay. So it's not due with their contract?
There is nothing we can change, that's how they do.
It has some do with who they chose to be members of?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, and like I said, nothing really has to do with the actual guys that work here.
Yeah, no.
The road materials budget was decreased by eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars.
How does that impact their service, are you able to survive?
It does. Like, unfortunately, there has to be cuts and these cuts are in response to fixed costs that we really can't avoid. And there had to be a, a value to those cuts and they are going to have an impact. And that is going to be an impact. It's not going to affect the chapter ninety money. It's not going to impact their roads plan, but it may impact the side jobs that they can do, the, the holes that they can patch, the, I don't know different examples to use off the top of my head, but there is certainly going to be almost twenty thousand dollars less for general projects.
Okay.
Snow and ice budget is level at two hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred.
Nate, can I ask one more DPW question?
Sure.
So we have in here, you know, the catch basin cleaning and such. Um, where are we with MS four permitting and being in compliance with the regulations?
I, it was actually just beginning to think about that two days ago because we got the email on the MVP grant.
Ah.
So the other day was really the first time that I had spoken about MVP and I am looking to apply for the grant. I was hoping to be able to finish the budget, then start working on that.
Right.
So it's something we're aware of and.
But we're not currently in compliance, I imagine.
No.
Okay, that's what I thought the answer was.
No.
Does reducing the catch basin cleaning, um, funds we have here reduce our ability to keep up with those and therefore put us even further out of compliance?
Probably, like unfortunately. And like I said, any of these questions that I do not have a direct answer for here this evening, I will bring department heads to explain further as we enter the budget process.
Can you elaborate on that, what, what you two are talking about? I'm not really clear, I want this MR.
You're not enjoying this?
Four, seven thirty-two, seven, catch basin, something around.
Stormwater.
Stormwater and the cleanliness of stormwater entering our system.
So the state came out with a number of years ago, an unfunded mandate, is that's what they're really good at. And the, um, certain requirements had to do with the, you know, the size of the community. They gave waivers for a period of time to get people up to speed and so forth. But after a certain point, you're supposed to comply or allegedly DEP can find you, you know. They're very famous for being able to find communities X number of dollars a day for being out of compliance. So you have to make sure things are going where they're supposed to go, they're not going to the wrong location, they're not further polluting and so forth. And one of the big things is actually catch basin cleaning, to make sure there's not stuff that isn't supposed to be in there now.
So are we out of compliance?
Oh, yeah.
Very much so.
So what are we talking silt and sand and stuff like that?
Rock basins and that.
Rocks?
Yeah.
Rocks and, okay.
Talking like engineering costs, you're talking design, you're talking, it's, it's a, it's a huge thing. But MVP is the municipal vulnerability program that came out a few years ago. And once you're an MVP pro, community, you're eligible for their grants, they're competitive grants, very similar to like the green communities grants. And you can go for them and stormwater is usually one that you can reach out and go for. That being said, it won't cover the cost of everything.
Right.
Um, other communities, some had to use like ARPA to have an outside engineer come in, kinda get them up to speed, get the design or the basic pieces ready to go. I only know high level.
And I don't believe we are fully an MVP community at this time, but that's something I hope to work towards.
Very good, thank you.
Debt service, the school roof debt in, interest increased from, by nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. That is what you think it is. We're hoping that next year, we can wrap up the fire truck and the school roof project into a long-term financing option. We are still working with the MSBA to finalize that loan and project and that's why this is still in temporary funding year over year.
Is that, is the school roof, it's excluded that, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So even though the amount goes.
Debt exclusion, yeah.
So even though the amount goes, yeah, even though the amount goes up, it doesn't impact our direct budget?
Yes.
It's outside.
Yep.
Okay.
Assessments and liabilities, health insurance is increasing by five point two percent or eleven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. That is a quoted number that we already have locked up. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, that shouldn't.
Yeah, you gotta doggone one.
I did, I, that should stay where it is.
Is that, sorry Nate, one follow-up on that. So for the health insurance, when you do the calculations, does that include everyone now who's on certain plans? Do you give any flexibility in case you have to add someone? Or is it you should just wash out, okay, where people come on, people go off and usually you're net zero at the end of the day?
It, it's an annual cost because we paid at the very beginning of the year, it got paid.
The health insurance?
Yeah.
We don't pay health insurance on a monthly basis based on who's currently enrolled in the plan?
We do. But there is also, let me get back to you on that.
Okay, cool.
The liability insurance increased again this year by twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. I am currently working with MIA to see if they are a better option for our liability insurance.
And that's without any claims against them, just up sixteen percent.
The, the insurance industry as a whole has gone.
It's because of things going on in the south?
Everything. It's apparently like a nationwide issue where it puts it all, yeah.
Cost, floods, storms. It's just out of control.
The ni- the nice thing about MIA though, if we are able to switch and even get a savings, is they have various grants that come out that would benefit the town. Like they had like a ten thousand dollars risk management grant that comes out every year. It's quasi-competitive, but usually, you know, if you put in for it, you can usually get it. They also usually, sometimes they have cyber security stuff that comes out. They have lots of free trainings and everything else, so it's.
What is MIA?
M I I A.
MIA?
MIA, Massachusetts inter-local insurance agency. So it's, they're the insurance agency that carries most of the towns and many of the school districts in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And for full transparency, the town of Hubbardston has been with them before and at one time it ended up being that leaving was a cost savings. And now we've reached a time where potentially going back would be a cost savings.
Which is okay, there's nothing wrong with shopping around.
Yeah, so.
That's safe. I gotta do it every year, so.
Retirement assessments have increased by thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And that's the July one cost. You can get two different rates, one that you're paying at the beginning of the year and one that splits up over the course of the year. Traditionally, we pay the front-end one to get the savings of twenty or thirty thousand dollars. Now the budget buster. Quabon Regional School District is raised by nine percent. In your packet right now, my formula went a little wonky, but the number that's in the Quabon is nine percent. I will send an updated version after this meeting. If the current amount that the Quabon Regional School District is proposing was to go through, we would need another hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And what's the current percent they have for us?
Eleven point nine eight.
Okay, so this isn't at nine, but eleven point nine eight's their current projected.
Yeah.
I assume we're playing the same game as last year, we're getting down to the, the better number or the best number?
Yeah.
The best deal.
The school.
Still look up.
The best number was three percentage points back from where we are.
And I had told them at the very beginning, as I said, both publicly and via email, the superintendent is easily accessible. There's only so much even she can do at this time. They are hoping to be able to come to a joint meeting as was in the email that you all received today. I had tossed out your next meeting, which will also likely be the meeting when the structural deficit working group will come and present a couple of ideas on that end. So I will finalize, the superintendent did send me an email back saying that that would likely work, but Cheryl may have to zoom in. I told her that that would be fully acceptable. So I will let the boards know the minute we have a final meeting date for that. I assume that for the budget timeframe, it would have to be their next meeting or the following. If we don't do it outside the parameters of the select board meeting.
I just have one question on, so we went up by twenty students. What is, I, I mean, I know the cost of the twenty students, what is it, eighteen thousand times twenty or whatever it is? What it, what, how much have they increased above what we already know we gotta pay for the student?
Four point something percent, I'll bring it up.
Over the, over the, okay.
Yeah, hold on, I'll bring, they're gonna.
Eighteen eight per kid now, eighteen eight?
They're gonna harp on that. They highlight us, so I know where we, where we are.
Yeah. Yes, they definitely highlight us. It's a really big to watch.
On a hit list.
And we go, we're first of the five towns to vote. Our town meeting is always first and we're usually the ones that are most vocal, so.
We're the bad people.
You can look at it that way, you know, but.
Well, at some point, at the rate we're going, we're not gonna be able to sustain these ten, twelve percent increases. We might have another year or two, then we're done, we're upside down.
So Peter, that's the last few years of student enrollment. As you can see, everyone else has gone down.
Yeah.
The school as an entity has gone down, but Hubbardston has gone up by twenty.
But, yeah.
Over the last twenty-one years, we have gone down two hundred and ninety-eight students.
And this is all ba- is this based on new homes in town?
There's a variety of things that.
Apartments, condos, new homes.
Could also be that there has been a relatively large move over the last couple of years.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it's just kinda weird that we're the only town out of five that's increasing and everybody else.
And the school has a good reputation.
It's not weird. We're in right next to Rutland, we're right next to Gardner, Route Two. It's, that's the way people are coming. So Berry would be after we get totally built up as much as possible would be the next hit.
Hubbardston Center School also has a really good reputation.
Yeah.
Is, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Francis Steiger, sixty-five, he'll have wrote, the twenty students are for QRSD right now.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
As a, as a whole entity, not just that Hubbardston Center from K through twelve.
Yeah, they might be up at the high school, but they're Hubbardston, the twenty.
My question though is, is that when you say plus twenty students, that's twenty plus students at QRSD high school? Or across, okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Across the whole organization, K twelve.
Twenty student residents or residence students.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, here's the last resident enrollment trend.
Yeah, and what's the cost versus eighteen what?
Let me get, let me say again. This is attached to the budget if anyone is interested in viewing it with more detail. It's also available on the Quabon Regional School District website.
I would highly recommend watching the meetings on their YouTube channel. I'm telling you. It's, I know I'm like the only person that watches all these stupid meetings, but let me tell you, there is some good ones in there that, yeah, there's, more people should really pay attention to YouTube meetings.
So that's the meeting between school?
Yeah, there's, so Quabon itself has its own YouTube channel and they post their meetings on there. There's subcommittee budget meetings on there, there's, there's full school committee stuff. Some of them are very lengthy and you can fast forward the first like two hours of it cause it's just them highlighting stuff that's going on and the, like, kids coming in and saying what they're doing in class. And you just fast forward through that to actually get to the meat of the meeting, you know?
There's the number Francois was just talking about, we're up eleven kids over the last three years strictly at Hubbardston. At Quabon Regional High School, up, we're down fifty-two in the last three years. And numbers are trending very much downward in the last twenty-one years.
As a whole.
As a whole, yeah.
In Hubbardston?
And everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yeah, Hubbardston over twenty-one years is down a hundred and sixty students.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know it was ten years ago, they had like two thousand students there as a total or what have you done with thousands of them?
Um, well, when my, when Angel was my oldest, was in Hubbardston Center School, there was three classrooms deep with thirty kids. Her year was like this baby boom.
Yeah.
And then Cheyenne was my next one and she still had three classrooms, but it was more like twenty deep. My two sets of twins, they're down to two classrooms of between twenty and thirty, depending on the classroom size. So there was a peak, like when I was in high school, I was the first blue and gold where it was, we couldn't fit all the kids at the Quabon.
Mm-hmm.
So they had to build on and then they built on to the Hubbardston Center School. And then it was like large for a long time, there was three classrooms for each. And then after, like I said, it was probably, so Cheyenne was born in two thousand and one. So after that, after she got out of there, it started to dip back down. So you're talking, you know, the, the two thousand eight through probably two thousand and like fifteen where it was, has been slowly going down. Now we're starting to, we've kinda petered there and now we're going to start to go up.
So you're at like a, a ten-year point, so.
Yeah.
But.
It was projected to keep decreasing when they wanted to, when they were talking about closing our school for a while ago.
Yeah.
And there's like, there's no way it's gonna keep decreasing and that's what a lot of the residents were saying because eventually, uh, the people that don't have children move one way or the other. Put that poorly, but that's the reality of life. And it's not gonna be necessarily single people that move into those houses. Most likely it'll be, you know, people that will want to raise a family in this area.
Already have two or three.
Yeah, or already have a family and are moving and getting out of city, you know?
The, the new growth in town that I've seen, I mean, it's definitely adding to the stu- student population from what I see, but, um, okay.
There are two, two hundred and eighty-two, uh, school choice children. The lion's share from Ware, Gardner and North Brookfields.
Right, I'm good.
We're getting to the number.
I'm still waiting.
It's gonna keep going.
On page forty-four of a hundred and nineteen.
It just went up another ten thousand, so.
Yeah, I was just, this timeframe, cha-ching.
Wow.
I think it was eighteen thousand.
I can't.
I thought it was twelve.
Around eighteen, nineteen thousand.
Yeah, eighteen eight.
So I think I, I think I heard something in this conversation that, um, the eleven point nine percent increase of that, four percent of that number is flat out for the increased number of twenty, twenty additional students we're sending there.
More than four, like the four percent is for the increase of the school. But it'll make sense when, when I get there. On page sixty.
Are we gonna get that tonight?
I don't know.
Maybe. I'm on page seventy of a hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, I can go. I'm still waiting for the total of what the twenty students cost versus how much our increase at Quabon regional is as a whole.
I'll run a little history of Hubbardston while I wait.
So I just wanna see what that difference is.
Well, keep in mind.
Total per pupil expenditures, Peter.
Yeah, well.
Per pupil in district nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent.
What was it? I'm sorry.
Nineteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent.
Per student.
So almost twenty grand.
That's times twenty, I don't have a calculator.
State average, twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-two twelve.
So we're still under the state.
So it's a hundred and nine, so it's.
It's both grand and eighty.
Three eighty, just for the students. And what was the total, our total increase? Total increase in students?
From last year to this year?
No, the students, our student increase, just the increase is three hundred and eighty thousand, just for the new students. All right. I don't need to know anymore, I'm good.
Page a hundred, I'm finishing now.
No, we're too, we're too far in.
All right, what's the thing? I don't wanna keep this here till nine.
So you, you had mentioned something Nate earlier about the school coming to visit us at our next meeting. So we can probably cover a lot of the pieces and if you have the bullet point questions ahead of time, we can give them to Nate and say, lead with this.
Yeah, can you, can you text those to me, please? Good looking out.
There you go. Heather will hop, don't worry.
She's already got them up here.
Yeah, I know, I know she does.
It's either on the next five pages or it's not on here.
Okay.
We can move along, I'll figure it out.
I will send it to you, I sent it to you in an email.
If that lottery thing ever goes through for Monty Tech and for some reason like we have a, a ton of kids, because we per student are, we're paying more for the Monty Tech than we are Quabon. The difference is, is we have way more students in Quabon, that's what makes a difference. But nobody balks at Monty Tech because we don't have enough kids there.
It goes to a lottery, we won't have any kids going to Quabon.
It could be that, it could be that way.
I mean, to Monty Tech and they'll all be going to Quabon.
This would be significantly worse had Monty Tech not dropped by ninety thousand dollars.
Correct.
Five-year forecast, projected expenditure growth is expected to outpace revenue growth, widening the budget gap from FY twenty-six to FY thirty. We talked about this, the, with the updated numbers in the, in the budget, the projected budget gap by twenty thirty is two million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two or negative eighteen point two percent of, percent of revenue. But what we all have to remember is that's the rainiest day possible. Like that's, revenues came in low, expenditure came in high.
Or it's only five years away, right?
Yes.
That's scary.
It is scary, but I, as not a the sky is falling type, I do like to point out that five years ago from, from now was also projecting these type of numbers and it even now. So whereas there is a structural deficit, if, and we do have to do something, it's, it's life.
So it's the most pessimistic view you may have?
Yes, this is the most pessimistic view we could possibly have.
The reality that we should've had our heads under the water by now, but we're still managing to tread.
Mm-hmm. And if you were to be most optimistic, what would be FY twenty-thirty look like?
Uh, hobble, hobble along forever. That's the, that's the optimistic slide.
Always for Peter to pay Paul.
And without radical changes in terms of two and a half or this or that.
Yeah.
Nothing's gonna change.
Yeah.
We're gonna be stumbling as we go and always chasing it.
So even with a two and a half.
Unless we get some businesses in town, etc., and things like that, but.
New growth.
Other than that.
New growth.
Capital, capital planning, we talked about that, nothing has changed on there.
That's good cause no one can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The benchmark communities, I, one of the more interesting parts of my budget transmission page was the benchmark community. Some of the facts that I put in there was the FY twenty-three average single-family tax bill was four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, the second lowest among our benchmark towns. We have the, a lower tax rate linked to lower household, household incomes and property values. Ninety-four point zero four percent of the FY twenty-four tax levy from residential and open space properties tied with, for the highest with Princeton. Limited commercial and industrial activity is one of the major driving forces behind this. Balancing affordable residential taxes with investments and services and infrastructure has become difficult. Five point nine six percent of FY twenty-three tax levy allocated to capital investments and debt service among the lowest. So we are certainly robbing Peter to pay Paul. That is a great chart to look at, you can really get an idea of what's going on. A lot of times, it's hard to realize based on our limited commercial and industrial slice of the pie that the taxes in this community are lower than a, than almost all of the communities in the area by almost two dollars, so that's per, per thousand. And that's what makes a proposition two and a half or something like that very hard because it is directly on the back of the taxpayers' wholeheartedly. And that's what makes a proposition two and a half or something like that very hard, because it is directly on the back of the taxpayers' wholeheartedly. It's up to me for being able to move again.
Ah, you're fine, yeah.
I don't suppose the next slide is the comparison of the average um actual tax bill, is it?
No.
Can we, can we add that? Cause I think what happens is people get hung up on what the tax rate is.
Yeah.
And they're so concerned that there's a high tax rate, but if you look at their average tax bill. A lot of times it's not as high as the other communities, so if you take those same comparative communities. And maybe even do an overlay on that chart and say, okay, now here's the average tax bill, showing the average value of the house as well, I think that puts things in perspective.
Yeah, but those communities, the average house is worth a lot more than Hubbardson's.
But even the ones with the tax rates that are lower, I remember years ago, before I knew where Wellesley was. Um, I had someone from the banking community who said, you know, he lived in Wellesley and, you know, they had a very, very low tax rate, like. Pet, you know, very, one of the lowest in the state, but the pa- tax bill was. You know, almost as much as, you know, the cost of a house.
Yeah.
Million dollar homes.
So.
Well, they get a lot of industry too, so.
But you have to, but still, almost every place is single tax rate, so.
Yeah.
But just going back to the idea, you know, you wanna have both those pieces of information together, because you're looking at one without the other. And you might have a little bit of a skewed piece.
And we're back.
It's a little screen, I like that.
Hey, it's old, yes, that's better.
Ed was no longer on the meeting, so we could.
Oh. Well, he's been off for a while, he could have done this long ago.
Free cash and stabilization, this proposal uses a hundred thousand dollars to balance the FY twenty-five budget and close the initial gap. One-time use of reserves helps manage immediate financial challenges, this is not sustainable long-term. This is, I can't speak back on five, seven years, this is at least the third year. We're using between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars of free cash to stabilize.
Yeah.
At, in this proposal, there is no direct use of stabilization. Want the proposal from me in my office at this time is actually going to be, as long as things stay the same, to put a hundred thousand dollars. Into stabilization to save for future rainy days. As long as we get closer and close the gap with the school, that is something that is feasible. But that is a conversation for another time. Managing the budget impact, what have we done? You have all been a part of this, so you know. Leveling or decreasing municipal department budgets, making conservative revenue projections, using free cash to balance the proposal. Collaborating with different communities such as our animal control deal with Gardner and Rutland Regional Emergency Dispatch. One way or another, positive or negative, we are working with other communities to aim to save. Legislative adv- advocacy, we had the legislators come here and talk about it. Rigorous oversight, we've been making. Monthly reports and keeping an eye on absolutely everything, increased transparency in reporting, these are all major steps forward. But there's only so much we can do without an actual change, either an increased economic development or something else. Conclusion, moving forward together. Where I'm grateful for the dedication of the community, both at an elected official level.
Are you kidding me?
Did the computer die?
Huh?
No, he probably.
Now I found what's on the board, yeah, I'm like, I just didn't go far enough.
Stupid.
Just keep going.
Alright, moving forward together, significant financial challenges, I look forward to collaborating on finding innovative solutions. Developing sustainable long-term financial plans, a whole bunch of buzzwords. I look forward to working with you guys over the next few months, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate in the slightest to reach out at any time.
Your battery is running low.
Battery's running low, look at me, done.
Okay.
Well done, well done.
Any questions we can take or we can hold off for another night?
Can I ask a couple quick ones?
Sure.
Um, the library.
Is it how many emails your husband has sent to me since sitting over there? Cause the answer's like ten.
He needs to learn how to hit the delayed schedule function.
He's killing you.
You can at least set him up so they come like every thirty minutes, so it looks like he's been busy. Um, no, but he hasn't. Uh, library, are we anywhere, and I I don't know the answer for Hubbardson unfortunately, um. Are we at anywhere in jeopardy of losing our certification?
No.
Okay, so we're fine with that?
Fine.
So we're able to meet the required number for our library books and supplies and all of those pieces?
No.
Okay. Um, one question.
Chris told me I could level fund it this year, and we wouldn't even be in jeopardy for at least another year or two, and we didn't level fund it.
Okay. Um, police, under police assistant, that one seemed to jump a little bit, it went from sixteen, six nine nine to twenty-one oh twenty-six, so you're showing a twenty-five percent increase?
That's at my and the chief's suggestion during the past year, the select board authorized a increase for the position to bring it more in line with the other clerical staff.
Okay, so we've kind of adjusted the number even since STM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's why I'm not, okay, so that's why that increase. Alright, that's all I have for now, Russell catch up with you offline.
Anyone else have any uh questions? I think from the public, Francois, that was Mike?
I've got, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Town clock maintenance. What are we calling the town clock?
So it's a clock across the street, and I I cut it because we haven't paid the young woman in almost three years.
Where where is that clock?
Over there.
In the church.
In the church.
The old meeting house.
Oh, okay.
And we were paying her something like eight dollars and twenty-five cents per wind. And we're doing our investigation to see why that stopped.
Why what stopped?
The winding? The winding.
Bees nest.
Properly.
Well, it's still, it's cracked though, right?
I don't know, where, where's the clock?
In the church.
On that church?
Yeah.
Where?
On, in the town, yeah.
People? Never seen it.
I'm told Gary may be winding it, so we might have found a savings.
No, okay, is it just a? Yeah, I don't know, I have no idea, I don't know what's going on, so I've never been there.
From what I'm understanding, and I have to look into it with Tony Moore. It seems like this might have been more of a special deal for for a certain individual versus an actual. Thing that we're needing done.
See, in other towns, we have to pay a professional clock guy.
You have to go deal with it.
X dollars twice a year, and then we also have extra money for when one of the ancient pieces breaks, cause the cost is very high.
Like our, like schools.
So hard to move on?
No.
Uh, no.
So we pay someone to go wind the clock in that church over there?
Not since twenty twenty-two.
Yet the clocks continue to run and keep time? Who owns the church over there?
The church.
The churchgoers.
Yep.
There's like seven.
Why aren't they paying it?
That's why.
That's my next question.
I cut it.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I cut it from the budget.
Well, the building isn't in the, in use all the time, is it?
No.
It sits there.
There are not many members, the CPC recently turned down a project over there to do some plastering. There have been conversations that I'm not willing to have on public record at this time, cause there is no legitimacy to them. But that may be something that the town has to look into someday, may not. But at this time, I cannot speak to much knowledge of what is going on at the church. You know, they have limited membership, I'm looking up the clock winder info right now.
I'm trying to find picture of one of the.
Nate, the last time we paid her was January fifth, twenty twenty-three, it was for thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. She was getting eight dollars and sixteen cents per wind, I'm giving you the payroll for this, it was through historical commission.
So she, sounds like she winds it quarterly, she was paid thirty-two bucks, right, and eight bucks a wind.
We haven't paid her in two years.
I understand that, but it sounds like it was quarterly that she winds it.
I think Nate can look into this one and get back to kicking.
Yeah, I need more details. I'm gonna keep it cut unless someone tells me how they're winding it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks Nate, uh.
Thank you guys.
You did a great job. One of the messages, I, not to us, but to to the public who are watching, just listening to these things, it's beginning to hit home that. We're s- we're seeing cuts, we're seeing decreases, we're. There's, and this is what the um, it's going to be like for, hopefully not forever, but. Uh, this is what our budgets are going to reflect, we have to be making cuts unfortunately. So hopefully the town people can be, end to realize that and understand. That we're doing the very best we are, that we can, as you are, so thank you for that. Okay, I'd like to get through the next sort of item quickly if we can, so we can get to Chris. Uh, on the consent agenda. Um, we have the minutes, the select board, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, we were all here. Um, I'll go through the appointments and then ask if there are any holds. And FYI and all these appointments, all the chairs of the various committees have approved the appointments, in case anybody was curious. So on the consent agenda. Thank you guys for, uh, thank you.
Mister Chair, just like to point out that her name is Denise, and not Deans.
Denise, yes, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dennis.
I know, I thought it was like, ah.
So under your appointments, we have Denise McAloney, interim town clerk. Town clerk department, fifty dollars per hour, twelve for twelve hours. Expires June thirty, twenty twenty-four, Mike Stoll, member, open space committee, uh, no rate. Uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four expiration, Gina Dixon, Assistant Emergency Management Director, Emergency Management Department, no rate. June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Rebecca Lloyd, member, agricultural commission, no rate, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Christine Barbera, member CPC, no rate, June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, are there any questions or holds on anything on the consent agenda, if not, could we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion is carried. Under new business, we need, uh, basically, just all we need here is a motion for, just to to open the annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to open the annual town meeting warrant, are there any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Surplus request, two thousand nine Ford Explorer DPW, I'll go to Nate on this one, go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair, this is surplus request from the DPW director, and if approved, it would be disposed of in accordance with the surplus policy. I believe for something of this value, it would just need to be posted on the town website and then responded to. It is a former police cruiser that was then sent to the DPW for a couple of years. Now has high mileage, has been replaced, there's a hole in the floor, and it, and it doesn't go reverse.
No reverse. No reverse.
As much as I tried to tell Travis, he does not need to go in reverse, that didn't work out.
Yeah.
So with that, I respectfully request that the board approve the DPW director's surplus request.
So is there like limitations right now in parking, like if there's, if there's one of those bar things, you just can't park there, cause you're gonna have to go over it?
Yes, you have the color. Yeah, you just, nope.
Flintstone mobiles, okay.
Yes.
Alright, any discussion on this, if not, could I have a motion to declare the two thousand nine Ford Explorer as surplus? And authorizing the TA to dispose of the best interest of the town.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion, any questions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Chris, come up and join us, while he's doing that, to, for the board, uh, item D, we're simply removing this from the agenda, okay, there's nothing else. So you can cross that off, it's being removed.
Succinct.
So, Chris, thank you for joining us, and thank you for being patient.
Well, thank you, Mister Chair.
So, um, the floor is yours.
Well, I'd like to get started by talking about parking in cornfields.
No.
I'll leave.
I I actually had a specific request to uh, to not spend a significant amount of time talking about parking in cornfields. Um, but uh, but I think that's a good illustration uh, about the the level of thought that went into what I'm gonna be asking you guys to send back to us for review. Uh, because we did have what could best be described as a rousing conversation for about, I don't know, thirty to forty minutes, about how many cars you can park in a cornfield and what the appropriate parking standards are. So, uh, I guess just to to briefly summarize for uh, for the public. I'm here on behalf of the planning board, my name's Christopher Monroe, I'm the chair of the planning board. Uh, and I am here to ask the select board to refer to bylaw revisions back to us, so that we can hold it for public hearing. Uh, the the first one is a um, a agritourism, ecotourism bylaw. Uh, and uh, just for the benefit of the public, this is something where the uh, the select board, the planning board and the economic development created a subcommittee some period of years ago. That subcommittee then met for about a year or so, came up with the draft. Um, it then got referred to the planning board. Um, and has been, kind of been chewed on and kicked around. Uh, there was also a grant that came in from MRPC, so MRPC, our regional planning organization. Spent some time looking at and working on this too, specifically, they looked at the uses. Uh, and then we also spent uh, some money out of the planning board's very limited budget item. In order to have our consultant take a look at this to make sure we get it right, because our consultant advises us on all kinds of issues, so. It uh, it makes sense that we have the person who helps us evaluate this, take a look at it at a time. So, uh, just to kind of recap what the purpose of this is, it's to promote agritourism and ecotourism. And why would we wanna do that? Uh, it's because it is a usage that generally folks in the town support. Um, it is a way to bring in some business, but bring in the right kind of business. Um, and it does tend to work well in in rural areas that are next to uh, city areas. So our proximity to Worcester and Boston makes this work potentially well for us, and there are some pretty good examples of it working out nearby. Um, and um, there's some, uh, Rutland recently had an accessory bylaw. Which is helping some of the farms that are left there stay preserved, and there's also been some agritourism, ecotourism stuff going on in Barry, although they don't have a specific bylaw for it. So there's some, some local, local analogs, but it matters. Um, the bylaw that we proposed uh, has, how we ended up, well, I'll skip how we got there. But, you're welcome. But what we ended up with is uh, it's essentially a modification of an accessory use bylaw. So whatever property is gonna be impacted by it, has to make it by a gatekeeping function. And that gatekeeping function is either being a farm that is defined under Massachusetts law. Um, being a farm that uh, doesn't quite make that definition, but gets uh, so much product locally. Is a way one can come in, and the other way one can come in is that seventy-five percent of the property is dedicated to agricultural purposes. So it's important to note that here agriculture is a term of art, so that's the stuff that you think of as classical agriculture. Uh, horse stuff, uh, viticulture, so anything related to grapes and wine growing. Uh, forestry and timber also counts as agriculture, so does aquaculture. What is, particularly to note cannabis cultivation does not come in under the statute. Uh, and that is specifically excluded by state law, uh, that's not something that we put into our law. Uh, there are a bunch of places where we had to make carve-outs in the proposal that we sent to you for state law, for example, agriculture is defined by the state along with some of these other terms. So where that is the case, we just pulled in the state definition. Um, and that allows us to deal with the fact that people are trying to do more with this. My feeling is we're gonna end up uh, another step along the way in terms of how. My feeling is we're gonna end up, uh, another step along the way in terms of how model communities look at this. Cause this is really only the second version of this law that I'm aware of coming into existence. Rutland's is pretty close. It was one of the big installation, uh, big inspirations for ours. Bolton also has one, but the one in Bolton doesn't work here. So we're, we're pretty early out on the fresh snow here i- in terms of doing this. So that's why it was important for us to build some flexibility into it, because as state law evolves, we didn't want to have this get kicked out. So that's the reason behind that. So essentially, what this law enables is if somebody makes it through that gatekeeping provision, they then have a list of uses that become available to them by right. And the list of uses that are available by right are all fairly low impact on the neighbor and low impact on the environment. So like if someone has an apple orchard, then they can do U-PIC. And keep in mind, this is just by zoning. So thi- this doesn't impact any of the rights that the select board or the board of health has. So somebody might still need like a vic license or an alcohol license or whatever that, so. This just clears it as an allowable use for zoning purposes. Um, some of the allowable uses are services directly supportive of agriculture. So like if somebody was a farrier or, um, uh, or like fixed horse blankets or something along the lines of that, that would come into the by right category. Uh, the next level of uses are uses that are by right with sufficient acreage. Uh, and, uh, this is where I need to pause to tell you how many cars you can fit in an acre. And, and the answer is enough cars for about three hundred and fifty people. Because one of the things that you'll notice there is, uh, the, the chuckle is because Nate was at that meeting and I think it is the most bored I've ever seen people get at a town meeting ever for anything, and that's saying something. So, if, if an event has, is expected to have attendance over three hundred and fifty people through the course, that pushes people into the third bucket, which is special permit. But if somebody's just having a one-time event or something along those lines where we're not worried about if they have more than five acres, because more than five acres is more than enough room to park all the cars on the property and take care of the sanitary services and stuff. But remember, this is zoning. It doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that the select board could require an event permit. It could require like a live music permit if that was applicable. Hubbardson, I don't believe, has that, but like a vic license and the health inspections, all those are still required.
May I ask you a question, Mister Chair? Uh, so I think when I read it, so the state law for a farm is what, a five acre minimum? Or is that town law? That's a right to farm community, is what, a five acre farm?
Well, there, there is a five acre limit, um, that is implied in the state law, but that isn't, it isn't required to be five acres under our bylaw, how it's.
Th- this one?
Correct.
Right, cause that's, it's not in the first section. It's like you're, it's through the gate, but it's at the next section, I thought I read that. If, if you have less than the required acreage to be a farm, that you have a way through the gate.
Yeah, y- you do, and that, that gets you into the first tier of uses potentially.
Yeah.
But it doesn't get you into the second tier, and then the third tier is a special permit for anybody.
Okay, thank you.
That, that seems out behind it.
Yeah.
So, uh, if there's, the, the third tier is special permit. Uh, and that tier is for anything that we think will be intensive upon the community, uh, the neighbors, the environment, anything where it's pretty clear to us that somebody needs to come in and they need to have a site plan and, and have a formal review process. And these are the things that we figured would be likely to generate significant traffic. Uh, that's really kind of the, the level that we worked at it from. So there's a few uses that are prohibited under it, uh, even as accessory. So, um, uh, slaughterhouse or arbitrage, um, commercial composting, that is in core to the operation of the farm. Um, and there's examples from communities around us where they allowed those specific uses and they went bad, sometimes in mildly entertaining ways. And there was another third one that was a banned use by.
Raising animals for fur?
Yeah, fur-bearing animals. Uh, and the reason for that isn't necessarily because we're trying to take some kind of, um, animal rights-based stand, uh, although that's obviously important to a lot of people and I respect that. Uh, it is because, um, the last thing in the world we want is to have somebody that had, that has a farm that has like a thousand mink or ermine or something like that. And for them to get out because of some kind of natural event. And, and that is a real actual fear, like that is why Florida is now infested with, um, like pythons and iguanas and stuff like that. Because there was a, a facility that was raising them in large commercial quantities and one of the hurricanes let them all loose. So, um, that's why we added those, and it's, the reasoning behind that is also important. Because we're going to need to submit that reasoning to the attorney general in order to get it approved. So, uh, we might write that back into the law as it is, or we might just put it on the cover sheet, but that's gonna be important to get it clear. As far as.
You could also talk about the Fox farm that used to be in Westminster that when they closed, they just let them all go.
That's suboptimal.
And I was writing the next town over, so.
Yeah, so there's, uh, there's good reasons. So enforcement is gonna be, uh, how it works under the rest of our zoning bylaws. It's gonna be the building commissioner. Uh, appeals are gonna go to the ZVA. For all of the by right uses, the building commissioner determines whether or not a use falls in. And then for all the special permit stuff, it goes to the planning board through an abbreviated process. We still have a site plan requirement, and I know that, that that's sometimes costly. Uh, but if someone's running an event that's going to, uh, on a regular basis have over three hundred and fifty attendees or have a on-farm restaurant or a, um, uh, a permanent wedding venue or concert, large concerts, that kind of stuff, really should just be subject to a special permit. Cause those are all very impactful potentially. So that is, um, that is, well, that's better than the thirty thousand foot view. That's like the ten thousand foot view of that one. I'm happy to take any questions the board might have.
So the idea with putting this bylaw in place and attracting either these types of businesses or having the owners currently get interested in these types of businesses is to be able to find a way to bring in additional revenue to the town based on whatever they're doing?
Well, that's only fifty percent of it. Um, so, so that is certainly a consideration, uh, is to move. But the, uh, the other reason is that although this is a business-enabling tool, uh, it is also a land conservation tool. Uh, because there's ultimately two ways that you can slow development. The first one is, is you can say, no, you can't build. And we've seen, the state says you can't really do that anymore. If you try to do any kind of serious, uh, limitation upon building, y- you get a smackdown from the attorney general's office. So, well, what can you do? Well, you can make economic incentives for people to not develop the land that they have. So part of the idea of this is if you have some, well, most of the people who have farms in town, there are a couple of serious commercial enterprises. Uh, but most of them are now gentleman farmers, or they're retired farmers, or they're working two to three jobs because they're trying to keep the farm going as a labor of love. So, uh, lots of those people came to our subcommittee meeting to talk about that and to talk about the kinds of uses that could maybe make it so they only had to have one job instead of two farms to keep the job going. So by enabling them to, to run these small farms in a way where they're more likely to be profitable, it makes them less likely to get sold off and become part of developments. But in a way that encourages business, uh, builds us the kind of community we all wanna have where, uh, nearby we have fun things that we can do uh, and fun places where we can go and get together with our other community members without having them become just absurdly large burdens on the town.
Any questions?
You did a good job. I know you spent a lot of time on that, so good job on that.
Yes.
I attended, I attended that meeting and it was very informative and you guys really put in a lot of effort and time and that was very obvious. Your presentation is too. Well, if there are no questions, then, uh, we basically need a motion to send the proposed accessory rural enterprise zoning bylaw amendments back to the planning board for study, report and public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motions carried. Thank you very much, Chris.
Uh, did we get the best one up too?
No.
Best one did not make the cut?
No, cause I got it the day after.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's not part of this years.
Would we like to take it as a matter not reasonably int- reasonably anticipated?
Anticipated?
I did have an opportunity to talk to somebody from the attorney general's office on Saturday, which, um, has certainly altered some of my thinking and I think makes it more timely.
Because it is in my belief, and I can speak to the chair if he believes the same way, that the forwarding anything back to them isn't going to make that large of a difference, because it one hundred percent has to come back to you. So if it was within your interests, Mister Chair, I would not be opposed to you allowing the chair of the planning board to speak to a revision to the battery energy storage systems bylaw that they would like to be able to potentially bring up at town meeting after study, report and public hearing.
Speaking to it tonight.
Speaking to it right now.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
Right. So as you may remember, uh, a little bit ago, we had a article on the warrant for a battery energy storage system bylaw. It got disapproved by the attorney general's office. Um, and it got disapproved because they read it in the most confining way possible. And it also got caught up in kind of this political moment, because the governor's administration had just committed to make a, making a gigawatt of battery energy storage available for the grid by twenty twenty-five. Uh, and that was gonna require a bunch of projects, so, a- and the attorney general's office said that, that, that was not a part of the decision-making, but the timing really was pretty coincidental. So ours got denied despite the fact that it essentially would enable battery energy storage systems with some restriction in all zones in the town. So what the planning board, uh, would like to, uh, have the opportunity to review is, uh, essentially a modified one of the one that you guys already told us to look at. Uh, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before.
The year before.
It was the year before. The attorney general's office also had it for almost two years in review. So, um, we've, we've learned from the letter that, uh, the attorney general sent to us. I also had a chance to, um, uh, to, to listen to and speak with the head of the local review for the attorney general, uh, who was speaking on this particular topic at the citizen planner training conference on last Saturday. And, uh, it become, it became very apparent, um, that the draft that the planning board had been kicking around was pretty close to being possible to approve and that we actually probably could've got the old version approved if we put a better cover sheet on it and explained why we were doing what we were doing. So for anyone who doesn't know, battery energy storage systems are very large batteries. And they're needed in order to stabilize the electrical grid, because sometimes people draw a whole lot of power, sometimes they draw a little bit. Sometimes solar's available, sometimes wind's available, but there's, there's volatility in demand. And these battery energy storage systems are huge batteries to stabilize that. Which is also why there's a compelling public interest to, to have, uh, some form of them pretty much everywhere in the state. We proposed a regulation that was essentially going to have them follow, uh, what we currently do for solar and, which is the regulation that we would like you to send back to us for further research and investigation and public hearing. Uh, where we essentially put up the battery energy storage bylaw as we had proposed it with a couple changes, um, based upon allowing certain smaller ones, uh, and providing a better reason. Because ultimately, uh, the, the law as it stands says, and this is the attorney general's interpretation, you can't unreasonably regulate solar. And then the attorney general's office extrapolated that to, you can't unreasonably regulate battery energy storage because battery energy storage systems are sometimes connected to solar fields. So they kind of made up that last part, but that was why they disallowed our, um, our bylaw. But you can reasonably regulate them, and we're in a very particular spot where we should be reasonably regulating them. Um, because we're all on well water. Uh, we have the wellhead protection area for Gardner. We have the water supply land for Fitchburg, and about forty percent of this town is the headwaters of the Ware River watershed that provides drinking water for three million people. So if we put that in our cover sheet, uh, we're gonna get a lot more latitude in terms of what we get for, uh, a review from the attorney general's office. Uh, because they also don't go deeper than what's in the four corners, so if you don't put a, a report and a cover sheet with it, that's just the end of it. They assume whatever your intent was from the four pages of the document. So, uh, if, um, if the board would indulge us, uh, and, um, it would be great to get that referred back to us for further study, review and public hearing.
So what do you need from us then right now? A motion to.
Yeah, we need you to send it back to us like, uh.
The same thing we just did, only the BESS.
Yeah, the battery energy storage bylaw. It's substantially similar.
It's gonna be that, I'll take a whirl with it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's called BESS, right? D E S S?
What's grid, grid scale, BESS?
Grid scale BESS?
Yeah.
Grid, scale.
Battery energy storage system.
E E S S, and I'll say it, B E S S? Okay.
Grid.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to propose that the grid scaled B E S S zoning bylaw amendments be put back towards the planning board for further study, report and public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Thank you for that. Okay.
Can I, may I ask one question?
Sure.
So, the attorney general is the one that decides what's unreasonable in their mind? Or do they have a group of attorney gen- or a group of people that decides that?
So.
Between reasonable and unreasonable. It's a big gray area, right?
Yeah, they, they have a group of people, uh, and they, they rely on some case law in order to do that. There was a recent case that was, it was at a well farm, uh, which is actually the one that they cited, which I don't think applied to us, because it was one where only two percent of the town was available, and ours, a hundred percent of the town was available.
And they, the attorney general in Boston doesn't know that we supply water to them. They have no clue where Hubbardson even is, okay?
All right, how was Hubbardson?
You know what I mean? So, I mean, how can they?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, then let's move, move on. We have no old business. Uh, Nate, TA.
Between emails and things that were said during the budget presentation, I don't have much more to add in the, to keep this short, uh, if you wanna read any more pages of beautiful report put out by me, the town, the formal town report, the former TA report is on the town website.
Okay, fine. We have no policies to review. Matter's not reasonably anticipated, anticipated by the chair. Is there anything more to come before us? All right, seeing none. Any public questions from anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn.
Mike, you made it, eh?
Thank you all.